Okay, the date is January 21st, 2025. The time is 18:08 hours. And I would like to call the Frederick County School Board meeting to order. We have an agenda before us. Do I have a motion for approval?
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the agenda as presented.
We have a motion to approve and it has been properly seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing, none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay. Nay, opposed.
One opposed? We have an agenda.
I've cut that off for today.
And Mr. Chair, we have two requests to participate remotely. One by Ms. Linda Martin and one by Mr. Miles Atkins. The request by Ms. Linda Martin to participate remotely has been... Or Ms. Martin has requested to participate in the meeting remotely for a personal matter, specifically due to a medical reason in Frederick County. I move to allow Ms. Martin to participate in this meeting remotely.
Aye, second.
We have a motion for remote joining and has been properly seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It's been approved.
And Mr. Chair, we have a request by Miles Atkins to participate remotely. Mr. Atkins has requested to participate in the meeting remotely for a personal matter, specifically due to a work commitment in Sterling, Virginia.
Motion has been made for Mr. Atkins to...
Second.
And it's been properly seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Now, we have an agenda. I do apologize, Ms. Martin. Thank you for keeping me straight. We have an agenda before us. Do I have a motion for approval?
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the agenda before us.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Yes, we can hear you. Was that...
Hello?
We can hear you.
Miles, can you...
All I'm hearing is music. I can barely hear you guys. And I'm here... I'm broken, thank you.
I can't understand it.
There's some kind of radio on.
It's like something, the radio going on.
I can't understand it.
Let's talk about... Right off, all kinds of things.
Mr. Chair, I motion that we recess for five minutes to figure out the issue that we have.
Second.
Thank you.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Recession for five minutes.
Aye.
Do we get a motion to come back out of recess?
Mr. Chair, I motion that we return from recess.
Second.
It's been motioned to come back from recess and has been properly seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we are back in session. Madam Vice Chair, what's the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chair, I move that the county school board of Frederick County, Virginia, enter a closed session meeting for the following: to review and discuss appointments, administrative appointments, administrative leave, leave of absence, resignations, support staff hires, substitutes, tutors, volunteers, appointment of a hearing officer, the superintendent's contract, and goals of the superintendent pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711A.1. And to review and discuss individual student matters that would involve specific students and particular information contained in their scholastic records, including requests for release from compulsory attendance for religious reasons and for an alternative education program pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711A.2. For consultation with legal counsel regarding the superintendent's contract pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711A.8.
I second that.
Okay, we have a motion to go into closed session. It's been properly seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are in closed session. Again, the date is January 21st, 2025, and the time is now 19:05. Madam Vice Chair, what's the pleasure of the board?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I move that the board reconvene from closed session.
Second.
All right, we have a motion to return from closed session. It has been properly seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We're now back from closed session. Madam Vice Chair.
Mr. Chair, I move that the best... To the best of each board member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements under the Freedom of Information Act, Virginia Freedom of Information Act, were discussed in the closed session, and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion by which the closed session was convened were heard, discussed, or considered by the school board.
All right, we have a motion to certify the closed session.
Miles, second.
And Mr. Atkins seconded. So it's been properly seconded. Any discussion? Madam Clerk?
Mr. Funes?
Aye.
Mr. Bell?
Aye.
Mrs. Stewart?
Yes.
Mr. Klein?
Aye.
Ms. Erskine?
Aye.
Ms. Martin?
Aye.
Mr. Atkins?
All right, motion carries.
And Mr. Chair, we have several motions out of closed session. I move to approve the personal actions as recommended by the superintendent.
Second.
All right, we have a motion, and it has been properly seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the appointment of Mr. Craig McIntail as the hearing officer for personnel matters on an as-needed basis.
Aye, second.
All right, we have a motion to appoint, and it has been properly seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Carries.
I move to approve the release of students A and B from compulsory attendance.
I second.
Motion to remove from compulsory attendance has been made and properly seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
And those are the remaining... All the motions, Mr. Chair.
All right. Right now, we are going to ask for a minute of silence in honor of Mrs. Tammy Nicholson, a staff member from Apple Pie Ridge Elementary School who has recently passed away, so join us in a moment of silence. Next is our pledge allegiance... Pledge of allegiance. I now ask everyone who is able to stand for the pledge of allegiance, and tonight we have some of our students to lead us in the pledge. So if I could please have the students from the Virginia Honors Choir come up front, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for that. Next is a consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
It has been motioned and seconded. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We have an agenda. Next is stu... No, I cannot speak. Next is student and staff recognition.
One second.
Sir.
If we could read the proclamations. May I borrow your mic?
Absolutely.
Thank you. And we do have several proclamations today, so I'll start with School Principals Appreciation Week, January 12th through the 18th. Whereas, school principals work cooperatively to direct, develop, and inspire all members of the school, staff, and student body, and to communicate effectively with parents to engage them in the learning process, and whereas principals serve as educational leaders, managing the policies, regulations, and procedures necessary to ensure a safe and effective learning environment for all students in Virginia's public and private schools, and whereas principals and teachers are entrusted with the opportunity and responsibility of guiding, directing, nurturing, mentoring, and imparting knowledge to our children while they are at school, and whereas principals work collaboratively with teachers, staff, students, parents, and the community at large to proactively prepare students to be self-reliant and productive citizens, and whereas the Virginia School Principals Appreciation Week is an opportunity to recognize the hard work of Virginia school principals and to recognize the importance of school leaders in ensuring that every child has access to a quality education. Now therefore, be it proclaimed that the Frederick County School Board hereby declares the week of January 12th through the 18th, 2025, as Virginia School Principals Appreciation, dated this 21st day of January, 2025. We have another proclamation. It is National School Counseling Week, February 3rd through the 7th, 2025, and because this falls before our next board meeting, we'll go ahead and recognize it now. Whereas, school counselors work together with students, families, and school staff to help students reach their full potential, and whereas school counselors are committed to helping students explore their abilities, strengths, interests, and talents as these traits relate to career awareness and development, and whereas school counselors help parents focus on ways to further the educational, personal, and social growth of their children, and whereas school coun... Whereas, school counselors seek to identify and utilize community resources that can enhance and complement comprehensive school counseling programs and help students become successful, engaged citizens, and whereas comprehensive developmental school counseling programs are considered an integral part of the educational process that enables all students to achieve success in school. Now therefore, be it proclaimed that the Frederick County School Board hereby declares the week of February 3rd through the 7th, 2025, as National School Counseling Week, dated this 21st day of January, 2025. And I'll turn it over for Mr. Bell to read our School Resource Officer Appreciation Day.
I have a proclamation on school re... For the School Resource Officers Appreciation Day. It's on February 15th. That's a day after Valentine's Day, and I have it on good authority, they both... They do also like candy and flowers. Whereas, School Resource Officers, SROs, bridge gaps between youth and law enforcement and embrace a triad concept of school policing, serving in informal counseling, education, and law enforcement roles to support students and communities they serve. Whereas, School Resource Officers continuously lead by example and promote a positive image of law enforcement to schoolchildren and school communities. Whereas, School Resource Officers create safe learning environments, provide valuable resources to school staff members, foster positive relationships with students, and develop strategies to resolve problems that affect youth with the goal of protecting all children so they can reach their fullest potential. Whereas, School Resource Officers are valuable and essential members of the education community and deserve unwavering respect and support from the public in the pursuit of keeping schools and students safe. Now therefore, be it proclaimed that the Frederick County School Board hereby declares February 15, 2025, as School Resource Officer Appreciation Day, a special day to show appreciation for school-based law enforcement officers, and encourages all citizens to show their gratitude with displays of support and personal messages, dated this 21st day of January, 2025.
Thank you, Mr. Bell. And as Madam Clerk has kept me straight on all these meetings, we need an approval for the minutes from the school board from December 10th.
That is part of the consent agenda.
Is it? Okay, so we're... All right, then. See, keeping me straight again. All right, now we're going to the staff and student recognition.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chair. Good evening and welcome, everyone. This is a portion of our school board meeting, which we call the Awards of Excellence Program. Before we proceed, I would like to ask that everyone stay here through the entire program out of respect for each individual who is being recognized. Once we have completed all presentations, you will have an opportunity to leave and enjoy the rest of your very frigid evening. Hope you all are staying very warm out there. In addition, when you come forward for your certificate or to be acknowledged as a school, please take a moment to pause up here with the chair and myself for a photograph. Then move to the right, remain at the front, up here, and we will take a photo of the entire group being recognized. And thank you, everybody, families, and students for coming out this evening. I'll have Mr. Chair come up right here in the front, so we don't have to go down the stairs, and we'll call you guys up. Thank you.
In November, students from James Wood, Millbrook, and Sherrando High Schools traveled to Norfolk, Virginia to participate in the Virginia Music Educators Association All Virginia Senior Honors Choir. This year, there were 722 total auditions, and 132 seniors from across the Commonwealth were selected for this prestigious choir. Congratulations to the following students. From James Wood High School, Abigail Paxton. At the Annual Community Commitment for Change Conference, several FCPS staff members received the TIGER Award. The TIGER Award is presented at the Annual Community Commitment for Change Conference and embodies someone who never gives up, never says no, and keeps going until they find an answer. TIGER is the perfect example of how the community should view the children of our community and their families. And with us today, we have Elizabeth Fout. In November, Frederick County School Resource Officers Sarah Galbreth and Wayne Alsberry and School Security Officer Kim Nicholson swiftly responded to a medical emergency at Millbrook High School. Their immediate intervention helped to mitigate the severity of the situation before the arrival of emergency medical technicians. The dedication and professionalism displayed by these individuals underscores the vital role they play in ensuring the safety and well-being of our students. Thank you for your service.
Next up is citizen comments.
Mr. Chair, we have administrative appointments. Sorry. All right. So we have a couple administrative appointments. When I call your name, please come up to the podium. I'm going to read a little bit about you, and then if you want to say a few words to the school board. So first up, I would like to call Mrs. Crystal Marshall as our new Coordinator of World Language. Please come on down, please. Ms. Marshall recently was in a position as a French teacher here at Sherrando High School. She's held since 2001. Prior to joining Frederick County Public Schools, Ms. Marshall taught French at Lower Ridge Community College as an adjunct professor for four years. Ms. Marshall holds a Bachelor of Arts in French with a minor in sociology from Mary Baldwin University and a Master's in French from George Mason University. Please join me again in welcoming Mrs. Crystal Marshall. Welcome. Congratulations.
Thank you. So I just wanted to say, as a proud graduate of Frederick County Public Schools and a proud Frederick County Public School educator, I appreciate the opportunity to continue to serve our students and teachers in this new capacity. Though Sherrando will always be my home, I am excited to begin this new role. Thank you to the board, to Central Office, and to all those involved with this process. Thank you.
Okay, next up is Jennifer Duckworth as the new Assistant Director of Student Support Services. Please come on down. She has recently served in the capacity as Assistant Principal at Apple Pie Ridge Elementary School since 2006. Ms. Duckworth also served as an Assistant Principal in Berkeley County Public Schools for five years, and elementary school teacher for six. Ms. Duckworth holds a Bachelor's in Elementary Education from Shepherd University and a Master's in Educational Leadership from West Virginia University. Please join me again in congratulating and welcoming Mrs. Jennifer Duckworth. Congratulations.
Good evening, Board, Dr. Hummer and Cabinet. I want to say thank you for this exciting opportunity and how much I'm looking forward to working with the students, families, and schools of Frederick County in this new role. And I would also like to express my heartfelt gratitude to the Apple Pie Ridge community. Thank you.
Next, please come on down, is Ms. Sarah Mason, who joins the team at Jordan Springs Elementary as their new Assistant Principal. Having served as Frederick County Public Schools Special Instructional Services Supervisor of Compliance, Ms. Mason also served as Supervisor of Special Instructional Services and a fifth-grade special education teacher for FCPS since 2017. She brings two additional years of general education teaching experience in Wichita Public Schools in Wichita, Kansas. Ms. Mason holds a Bachelor of Science in Elementary Education from Shepherd University, a Master's in Special Education from Friends University, and a Master's in Educational Leadership from Western Governors University. Please join me again in congratulating Mrs. Sarah Mason. Congratulations.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, Dr. Hummer, and members of the board. Thank you for the opportunity to take the next step in my career. I'm excited and grateful to join the Jordan Springs Elementary community and support their continued success. I look forward to serving this community in this new capacity, working directly with students, teachers, staff, and families in a more focused, hands-on role as the Assistant Principal. Thank you.
All right, we have two more. Next is our new Assistant Principal at Frederick County Middle School, Ms. Lisa Booth. Please come on down. Ms. Booth has been a Dean of Students since 2006 at Frederick County Middle School. Additionally, she brings another 12 years of experience in various roles with public education. Ms. Booth holds a Bachelor in Physical Education and Health Education from Berea College, a Master's in Health Education from Eastern Kentucky University, and a postgraduate degree, excuse me, in Educational Leadership from Salem International University. Please join me in welcoming Ms. Lisa Booth.
Thank you, Dr. Hummer and the entire board, for the trust you've placed in me. I look forward to serving the community in a new way and continuing our work to make Frederick County Middle School a place where every student and every educator thrives. Thank you.
All right, last but not least, please come on down is Caitlin Summer, who joins the leadership team at Millbrook High School as their new Assistant Principal. Having been in Loudoun County Public Schools since 2012, Ms. Summer brings secondary experience as a special education teacher, special education dean, summer school principal, grade-level dean, and assistant principal. Ms. Summer holds a Bachelor in Political Science from Shenandoah University, a Master's in Special Education from George Mason University, and a certificate in Administration and Leadership from Shenandoah University. Additionally, she is expected to complete her Doctorate in Education, congratulations, in Educational Leadership from Shenandoah University, in May 2026. Please join me in congratulating her. Congratulations and welcome.
Good evening. I want to thank Chair Sturdivan, the Board, Dr. Hummer, and Mrs. Alton Dorff for investing in my leadership and trusting me to serve the Millbrook High School community as Assistant Principal. This professional opportunity is also, for me, very personal, as I have three children in the Millbrook High School pipeline. I'm honored to serve my community in this capacity, and I look forward to contributing to the continued success of Frederick County Public Schools.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Bell.
I would like to make a motion to pause for a five-minute recess.
Okay, the motion has been made to recess, and that'll give those of you that wish to leave the time to do so, and it has been properly seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Recession for five minutes. Motion to return.
Mr. Chair, I move that we return from recess.
Aye, second.
Been motioned that we return from recess and been properly seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Madam Vice Chair.
Thank you, Mr. That really, that motion passes, and thank you, Mr. Chair. Before we begin public comment, we would like to take a moment and remind everyone that the school board updated our policy regarding public participation in meetings at our November 19th, 2024 meeting. Pursuant to the updated policy, all members of the audience and speakers are expected to be courteous to others and model for students how to respectfully participate in public meetings by speaking and behaving in a manner that adheres to our student code of conduct. The student code, the code of student conduct prohibits the use of profanity or slurs against people based on their perceived race, ethnicity, color, national origin, citizenship, immigration status, weight, gender, gender identity, gender expression, sexual orientation, or disability. It also prohibits disruptive behavior that interrupts or interferes with the orderly conduct of this meeting. Additionally, pursuant to the updated policy, if you brought any signs, posters, banners, or like objects, those items must remain in the back of the room so that you do not restrict the view of others. Copies of the updated policy, 119P, have been provided and are available for you to pick up on the table where the signup sheet was located. A QR code has been provided with each copy, so you may directly access and review the code of student conduct, which has been incorporated into policy 119P.
Frederick County School Board is pleased to receive public comments at each monthly meeting from members of the public, which include residents of Frederick County, Virginia, including residents of Winchester City, Virginia, FCPS students, parents, and legal guardians of FCPS students, FCPS employees, and businesses located within Frederick County, Virginia. Individuals speaking to the board will be allotted three minutes. Those individuals representing groups or organizations will be allotted five minutes with one representative per group. Upon recognition by the chair, speaker should approach the lectern to speak to the school board. Members of the audience and speakers are expected to be courteous to others and model for students how to respectfully, respectfully participate in public meetings by speaking and behaving in such a manner that adheres to FCPS student code of conduct. Complaints regarding FCPS employees should be first submitted to school principal or to the school board office. Complaints regarding individual students should be submitted to the school principal or appropriate school official. School board is committed to showing respect and courtesy to all citizens. Comments that are not protected under First Amendment of the U.S. Constitution will not be tolerated. This includes comments that are vulgar, obscene, threatening, and comments that are intended to incite violence or breaches of peace. Members of the audience are not permitted to interrupt a speaker or meeting by asking questions or making comments. Signs, posters, placards, banners, or like objects are permitted into the school board meeting, but only if the individual possessing such items remains in the back of the room, so as not to restrict the view of those attending the meeting in person. Violation of the guidelines will result in the chair ruling the speaker out of order. Continued violation may result in removal from the premises. We have provided copies of the updated policy as well as a QR code that will take you directly to the Code of Student Conduct handbook. They are located on the table where the signup sheet was located. The chair has discretion concerning public participation at school board meetings. The school board meetings are tape-recorded for the purpose of clarification and the development of official minutes. First is Kristy Scarborough.
Kristy Scarborough of the Stonewall District. Mr. Sturdivan, on December 16th, you contacted the Frederick County Sheriff's Office because you had been receiving criticisms for what you did at the last meeting. You then told a deputy that you understand how to block phone numbers and emails and have been doing it with success. Well, I am now making a verbal FOIA request for the records pertaining to all the numbers and those emails that you have blocked unlawfully. Next, a little disclaimer. What I'm about to say, you guys are not going to like it whatsoever. You're going to be disgusted, you're going to be appalled, and you might even be shocked, but Sturdivan, you specifically are going to want to hear what I have to say. I only ask that you let me finish, because at the end, it will all make sense. No use in shielding any of the children in the room or anybody watching, and you're going to understand why. You're the faggot. You're the fudge-packing fairy.
Mr. Chair, you're out of, she is out of order.
You are out of order. You are out of order. You are out of order. I'm asking you to stop it. You are out of order. Ma'am, have a seat. You're out of order. Your time's up. She's out of order. I'm asking the deputies to remove her from the building, please. Yes, I asked to have her removed.
She was not reading a book. She was calling me those names.
Yeah.
No, she was reading from the book.
What's your name, ma'am? What's your name, ma'am? What's your name, ma'am? Then you're not authorized to speak. You're not authorized to speak. You're out of order. You're not authorized to speak. Have a seat or leave. Have a seat or leave. Ask order from the premises, please. Leave the premises, ma'am.
Mr. Chairman, if I may. Ma'am, there is a process. If there's a book that you're not happy with, then you can, well, she's using inappropriate language. I'm not going to get into an argument or debate with you. There's a process, and you can go to our Frederick County Public School website, and you can use that process and indicate your concerns with that book or any other book that we have in our libraries. Now, I do believe that Mr. Sturdivan, the chairman of this board, has asked you to leave. And officers, if you could please follow the authority of the school board chairman, that would be great. Thank you.
Ma'am, your time is done. I'm asking you to sit down or leave. Deputies, can you ask order out, please?
I will take the time to look into this issue.
Next up is Chris Lawson.
Happy New Year to everybody. My name is Christina Lawson, and I live in the Gainesboro District. Students attend school to learn hard skills like reading, history, science, and math. They also need to learn soft skills like teamwork, communication, collaboration, and problem-solving. Learning these skills comes from social awareness, which is the ability to put themselves in another person's shoes. Talking and working with others that have different backgrounds will allow them to build relationships that can be used in all aspects of their lives. Recent surveys show that these interpersonal skills are at the top of the list of what employers look for in their job candidates. The use of these skills enhances productivity, adaptability, and innovation. I understand that Frederick County Schools is working on a new strategic plan. This plan needs to provide an environment where all teachers, students, and staff feel safe, recognized, and accepted. Only in this type of environment can open and honest discussion occur and allow students to practice and hone their interpersonal skills. Only in this type of environment can our students reach their full learning potential. I'll add this. If we're not careful, children can also learn less desirable things, such as disinformation, narrow-mindedness, and intolerance. These lessons can lead to bullying, suicide, and violence. People are not born with these sentiments. This learned behavior comes from our families, our communities, and our politicians. I believe that school is the perfect place to learn acceptance and understanding of others, to learn that, though we have differences, we also have much in common. If anyone's interested in getting honest information about the LGBTQ+ community, there are good resources online. I'll suggest the Human Rights Campaign at HRC.org, also PFLAG at P-F-L-A-G.org. Please do your own research and don't let, don't just listen to the rhetoric you hear in our community online or from some of our elected officials. It is my privilege to speak up for those that might not be able to speak up for themselves. It's my right and responsibility as a taxpayer and a member of this community to speak out about the direction I think our school system needs to go. I'll continue to speak up as long as hate and intolerance exist in our society, and I encourage others to do the same. Thank you. Have a good night.
Penny Hagerty. Angela McKenzie.
Hello. Good evening, school board members and staff and FCPS families. My name is Angela McKenzie. If you know me or have received one of my letters, I am praying for you, and of course, God always extends his mercy and grace to us all. Romans 8:28 states, "And we know that all things work together for good to them that love God, to them who are the called according to his purpose." In order for this verse to be true for us, we must get it straight. We must put God first, love God and love others. I believe that the purpose of life rests on three main precepts: relationships, respect, and responsibility. Our relationship with God must come first. In order to love God, we must first accept his son, Jesus Christ, and ask him into our hearts to forgive us of our sins and change us into his image. Our relationships with others will not be right until we truly take this first step of obedience. We must also show respect to God. This involves prayer and studying his word, the Holy Bible. We must ask God to help us trust in and learn his word. Only then will we be able to apply his word to our lives. We will not be able to trust and respect other forms of authority in our lives until we first trust and respect God. Once our relationship and respect for God begins to grow, then we will want to take on responsibility for his work, his purpose. God's purpose is that all men should be, should be saved. 2 Peter 3:9 says, "That the Lord is not willing that any should perish, but that all men should come to repentance." We too should want this for all men. It is our responsibility to be witnesses for Jesus, to share our testimonies with others so that hearts, eyes, and minds may be open to the truth of God's word. That is why I have written my letters, and that is why I'm, I am here now. Now, in regards to the LGBTQ+ class for young children, I believe that our school board has made the right decision in not allowing this class. God does not want us to open up children's young minds with too much until their hearts have had the chance to be open to him. We should not mislead impressionable young hearts, eyes, and minds. Some things are just non-negotiable. For example, two plus two equals four. That's a fact. If a student says two plus two equals five, we say, no, that's not right, and then correct them and try to show them how two plus two equals four. To me, a man is a man, and a woman is a woman, and marriage and sexual relations should only be between a man and a woman. It is confusing to children to state or show otherwise. Genesis 1:27 states, the male, says that male and female created he/them. And Genesis 2:24 states, "Therefore shall a man leave his father and his mother, and shall cleave unto his wife, and they shall be one flesh." Jesus confirms these statements in Matthew, Chapter 19, and in Mark, Chapter 10. I agree that young people who are confused about their identity and sexuality need kindness. All people need kindness. However, showing kindness should not be done by affirming sin and pride and lust or sins. We all need forgiveness, and we all need kindness.
Time.
Thank you.
That concludes citizen comments. Next is reports. So next up is Superintendent.
Yes, Mr. Chair, thank you. So I have a couple items before I jump into my needs-based budget presentation. So first, I want to thank the school board for commemorating the moment of silence for Mrs. Tammy Nicholson. She served our school community for nearly 30 years, and she left a huge, huge hole in our hearts. Please continue to send your thoughts and prayers to her family, staff, and students. I also want to give a big thanks to all of our staff and students who received recognitions and awards today. We have a lot of magnificent students that make us all very, very proud, and a lot of amazing staff that lead this outstanding group of students, and I cannot thank you enough for all of your hard work. As I mentioned earlier, the winter weather has not done us any favors. I want to give a big thanks to our facility services, staff, custodians, and transportation for all of their hard work as we try to open schools in a very safe fashion. This inclement weather, again, is not getting any better. We're hopeful for warmer weather in the coming weeks, and we will continue to keep you posted as we navigate this winter season. But thanks again to our staff for all of their, their hard work, on top of all of their other roles and responsibilities. I also want to thank the school board for commemorating our principals, SROs, and school counselors for their appreciation weeks in a day. I also want to thank our school board for all of their support, for supporting these individuals and meeting the needs of our students. Each of these three individual, groups of individuals do so much for our school division and community, and we greatly appreciate your commitment to excellence. Our principals work hard every day in making sure teachers and staff are in the right spot to educate and support our students while managing and maintaining the plethora of other variables throughout every day. Our SROs, who are there here this evening, which are very thankful for Sheriff Milholland and allowing us to have our SROs in our schools, and the many tasks and duties they perform every day is a true testament to their dedication to our students, staff, and community, and they remain committed to being proactive in keeping all of us safe. And our counselors, we all know have, they have numerous responsibilities on a day-to-day, from course selections to student support, teaching classes, and being part of numerous teams to make sure that our schools and staff are safe. They also work very closely with our parents and our students, as well as other very important tasks. tasks to make sure students are where they are supposed to be of keeping our school community safe. Our gratitude is endless, and please keep up the great work. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm now going to jump into my needs-based budget presentation. For those in the audience and those listening at home, thank you for being flexible. This is located on Board Docs. I have the presentation out front. If you wanted to get a copy, or it's on Board Docs to look it over, I'm going to be presenting to the board. And if you all have any questions, please stop me throughout. So, as I have mentioned, this is my needs-based budget presentation. This is for information only, and there is no actions at this time. So, first, I want to remind us what our why is. And our why is our students. We work very hard every day to make sure that we are getting our students what they need, and that number continues to climb. We are now over fourteen thousand five hundred and forty students, and we continue to have unique needs of each of these students in order for them to achieve their goals, in order to get to where they want to go, and that is our responsibility, and it is our investment and our promise and our future. This budget process is very involved. There are numerous variables and aspects to how we collect our information to present to you all what our next year's budget needs to look like. We gather information from our strategic plan. We gather information from you all. We gather information from our constituents and our parents and our students to make sure that we are putting forth a comprehensive budget in order to meet the needs of our students, keep our staff, and take care of our current assets. This is a nine-month process from start to finish. As a matter of fact, when this budget is adopted, hopefully in no later than May 1st, we will get started on the next year's budget. So, thanks to Mrs. Anderson and the finance team. You know, that is never-ending, and we are always looking at making this process better so that we can continue to work through every aspect of this budget, which involves you, school board. So, please, as we work through this, if there's additional information or questions as we navigate this, we love your feedback, and we want to make sure we get this right as we work forward, again, meeting the needs of our school division. Back in October, we started this process by seeking feedback from each of you. We looked at the many different variables of where we currently are with staff initiatives, where we're at with our current budgetary needs, as well as our staffing and student needs, and we came up with these budget priority proposals, which you all adopted back in November, December, and we focused on these three specific areas. We looked at our instructional initiatives for supporting our students. We looked at our compensation packages for our staff, which is very, very important because that is what is the majority of the makeup of our budget. And then, of course, we looked at our operation in regards to our operational assets, which is the building you're sitting in, which is also our school buses, as well as the many different aspects to make sure that we're providing a conducive learning environment for our students. We also have our current strategic plan. We're in a very unique year where we are in the process of developing a new strategic plan that will be started in this upcoming school year in the fall of FY '26. Each of these areas that we've continued to focus on over the last five years, from our student success to the recruitment and retention of staff, to culture, and strategic partnerships with the many different representatives in our community, are a major contributor to meeting the needs of our students and meeting the future and the vision that we have for Frederick County Public Schools and beyond. We utilize each of these aspects, understanding that the strategic plan might shift and change, as Mrs. Knight and her team are currently working through, but these aspects more than likely will not change. We have to focus on our students. We have to focus on our staff. We thrive when we look at the different partnerships we have with this community, and culture is also very, very important to make sure that we attract high-quality staff and to make sure that we have a conducive learning environment for students. Before I move any further, do I have any questions, Mr. Chair? Do you want me to wait to see if there's questions, or do you want me to keep going? Okay, thank you, sir. Thank you. We also have a lot to be proud of. There are many, many different aspects of Frederick County Public Schools that we have to be very happy for, and I can think of fourteen thousand five hundred and forty of them. All of our students have something to contribute, and each of their stories make us who we are. We have many different aspects of our operations, from lunches we serve, to the miles we travel in regards to getting students to school safely, as well as the opportunities that we provide them through instruction. We have over ninety CTE courses and growing. We also have numerous dual enrollment courses, forty-seven-plus, which we are looking at adding more of those opportunities, as well as looking at the many different aspects of this growing school division to align with this growing community. And we want to make sure that we continue to stay on top of that and celebrate those many different areas. We also have a lot of stories to tell. The biggest story that we have to tell is our ninety-four percent graduation rate, which is higher than the state average. I have shared with you many, many times. I'm not stopping till we get to a hundred percent, but that is something to celebrate, that our students are graduating and they are achieving their goals. We have to find those other six percent to make sure that they are also achieving their goals as well. We also got approval, thank you, to the Board of Supervisors in the community for the Fourth High School, which is a huge deal. That's going to not only provide additional space, but it's also going to add additional opportunities as we hopeful to expand on our CTE and dual enrollment, as well as other courses for our students as we continue to grow and expand. However, with that, we have a lot of work to do. There are additional areas and aspects that we need to focus on as we continue to address the areas that can see improvement, and we have recognized those areas. And as we continue to build out our budgets, we have to plan and invest to make those changes. First, we are going to continue to look into our continuous school improvement plan process, looking at attendance, making sure that we're working with our parents and our students so they understand the importance of coming to schools, developing relationships with not only their peers but staff as well. Those important relationships are going to help our students excel and be able to achieve those goals. Looking at behavior. Behavior does impede learning, and we want to make sure that we put those supports in place to help support our staff so that every student is learning at their highest potential. And then, of course, all of that links back to the performance of our students as they continue to take high-stakes tests, as well as other areas as they continue to go through our academic program. Sorry, my clicker here. As I mentioned, the strategic plan, that is a big deal, and that is something that we're currently in the process of looking at, and we are going to have to invest in those changes that we make with that strategic plan. That is going to be a commitment for not only our school board and ourselves, but for you all, the community, as we develop this new five-year strategic plan, which goes into effect next year. That involves every aspect of this school division and community. So, we're going to have to invest to make those changes so that we continue to improve and focus on those areas so our students are able to achieve their goals. The next aspect, which we've been talking about over the course of the last six or seven months, is the new state framework coming out from the state. And if you've paid attention to this information coming out from the VDOE, as well as presentations that we have done as well, we have work to do. There's going to be four categories that the state is going to hold us accountable for, and it's going to range from distinguished, on-track, off-track, and in need of intensive support. We have numerous schools that are on-track and off-track. We have a few schools that are in need of intensive support. We have zero schools that are distinguished. Again, I am not stopping till all of our schools are distinguished. We have the resources, we have the staff, and we have the magnificent student body that we will be able to get there, and that is a high-stakes goal that we are committed to work on to get us to getting all of our schools to our distinguished status. But we have to invest in that. We have to invest in our staff. We have to invest in resources, and we have to invest in the changes that I'll be presenting to you here in a second. The other promise that I made, again, it's hard to believe that this is my third budget presentation to the school board and this community, and from day one, I've committed that we need to do a better job of thinking ahead. We have to look five and ten years down the road to make sure that we are creating a budget that is going to be sustainable over the next five and ten years so that we can continue to contribute to the students that will be here and are here now. We have to take a look at the needs of our students as they continue to grow. We have to look at retaining staff, high-quality staff, and providing them with the supports and resources they need in order to meet their job, because that is where all of this starts, because out of all of this, our biggest asset is our people. You, our staff, from our custodians to our bus drivers, to our teachers, to our administrators, to our executive cabinet, each and every one of them plays an integral part in the day-in, day-out of getting our students what they need, and eighty-three percent of our budget, eighty-three percent, is our staff. And we want to make sure that we continue to stay focused on those areas, because our staff is what meets the needs of our students. So, now, I'm going to dive into the budget, and please, Mr. Chair or other board members, stop me if you have any questions. We're going to focus on three parts of this budget, which is the operating budget, debt service fund, and our capital projects funds, which I'm going to break those down here right now. The other aspect of my promise is to make sure that not only are we thinking ahead, but we're looking at the phased-in approach of the different aspects of this budget. We're going to be looking at our staffing standards. We're going to be looking at the de-clustering of our pay scales back from 2010 in the recession, where we have to fix those pay scales over years of getting zero or minimal pay increases, as well as taking a look at other incentives that we can progressively add on. The other promise that I made is that we will continue to be good stewards of our dollar. So, every year, I have tasked my staff to take a look at our budget and look at our line items to see, are there any shifts of money that we can utilize so that we can request less from the locality? Now, this isn't hidden money. This isn't money that's just sitting there that we can access. This is money that is built into our budget that maybe we didn't use in a given year, or maybe it was shifted, or maybe there was some moves that we've made, and we have determined that there was six hundred and fifty thousand dollars that we can reallocate within our budget, so that's six hundred and fifty less that we are requesting from the locality. And we will continue to take a look at that, because that's going to change year to year. It's going to change on our needs. It's going to change on our instructional practices, and it's going to change when we make those adjustments in regards to how we are being fiscally responsible with our budget. So, first, if you remember, excuse me, with our school board budget priorities, there were three areas that we wanted to focus on. The first was compensation packages. So, for the four groups of staff that we focused on were teachers, which was a four-point-nine percent average across the board, our classified staff, which was a five-point-six percent across the board, that's our custodians, administrative assistants, bus aides. We also have our other personnel, which was a four-point-four percent average across the board, which that includes our psychologists, diagnosticians, our athletic trainers, as well as some other folks, and then a three-point-four percent for administrators and supervisors. So, a breakdown of each of these groups across the board, we started with our COLA, which is a cost-of-living adjustment, which is a two-point-five percent. That's determined by the Social Security Office, so we don't just randomly make up that number, and we started there. If you also recall, we're at the second year of the biennium for our governor. The governor comes out with a budget every two years, and part of that was a three percent increase each of his two years of his budget. So, we've increased another point-five percent to get to that three percent average. And then, here's where we are going to be phasing in the different aspects of our budget. So, as we talked about last year, we're trying to uncluster those years of experience because our pay scales have gotten compressed and clustered due to the years of no pay increases, so we want to stretch that out, as we've talked about. We're also looking at adding five thousand dollars for one more year, and that will be twenty-four years or more. This past year, we did twenty-five years or more, and that made a significant difference, because as we've talked about in personnel and through survey data, staff are leaving us to go to school divisions above the COCA line to get that three-years average before they retire. So, if we can get us closer to that, and it also shows our dedication and our acknowledgement for our staff that commit to twenty-five years, and in this case, if this gets approved, it would be twenty-four years. And then, of course, we also bumped our starting salaries for our staff to fifty-four thousand, and that was something that we worked on so that we can stay competitive with neighboring divisions. We also recognize that we have to do a better job with our classified staff in regards to compensation. These folks keep our school division running. They are an integral part of our school division, and this is our custodians, facility services, bus drivers, cafeteria workers across the board, and not only are we losing some of them to neighboring divisions, but we're losing them to retail, and we have to keep up with those pay increases in order to keep the great staff that we have. So, we started with the two-point-five. We increased to the three percent, and then we also unclustered years of experience, and then also provided them a step to get to that five-point-six average across the board. We also looked at our other professionals, and we started with the two-point-five, increased to three. We looked at those steps to get to the four-point-four, and then also our administrators, supervisors, and coordinators. Same, started at two-point-five and then increased from there to get to a three-point-four average. We also wanted to focus on three other specific groups that we've identified as needing additional compensation to keep the great staff that we have. And the first group is our instructional and bus assistants. We've recognized not only are we losing them to neighboring divisions, but we're also losing them to retail, and those are integral part of our school division, as you know. Bus assistants on a bus, supporting students with unique needs, as well as our instructional assistants in the classrooms, and this is across all three levels. We also wanted to take a look at our school security officers. As we've talked about many, many times, safety is important and number one, and this isn't our SROs. Our SROs are also an integral part of our school division, but we do not fund them. The county funds them. These are school security officers that are in the building and also have an integral part of keeping our school safe. When we did a study, we recognized that they were underpaid when you compared them to neighboring divisions. So, that is an area that we wanted to focus on. And then, another area, talking with our middle school principals and our team, we currently have middle school lead teachers at the middle school level. As our numbers climb and as responsibilities climb, we recognize that we need to provide additional support for our middle school administration, so we've taken those lead teachers and we moved them to what's called a dean role, which would be a twelve-month position, and that will help with administrative responsibilities, help with referrals, help with day-to-day tasks, but it's also going to be a farm system to raise good administrators so that we could replace administrators as they retire and leave Frederick County. So, we're starting that at the middle school level. Lastly, we talk about this probably at every personnel meeting, and this is something that we talk about quite regularly with our administrators, is the need for additional special education support, specifically our learning centers. We've recognized that with the additional training that these individuals require to meet the needs of our unique students, we want to make sure that we provide them with the supports that they need and their unique needs. So, we wanted to focus on our Level Two teachers and instructional assistants by adding an additional salary bump, three thousand for teachers and one thousand for our instructional assistants, and that would be built into their salary, not a stipend, so it will go towards VRS. We've also recognized that we're having a hard time filling those positions, so we want to be able to compete with neighboring school divisions so that we can keep great staff and attract staff to fill those vacancies. Next up is our instructional initiatives. First is our staffing standards. This is something that we work very, very hard on to make sure that we're being good stewards of our positions so that every school is staffed based on the needs of their students. And we had a lot of conversations with our principals, with our staff, with you all in regards to where we're at with the staffing standards, and as I mentioned, this is going to be a three-to-five-year process to get us where we need to be with our local standard. Of course, we can't go below what the state says we need to be at, and the state does not do us any favors when it comes to the SOQ, as we've spoken about. So, until that gets fixed, this is an area that I'm going to be proposing we continue to work on to staff our schools. So, we started with conversations with our principals, looking at our staffing standards of a fifty-position request in this upcoming budget, but we were able, again, as we promised, to look at our current positions, and we were able to shift ten positions into those fifty for a request of forty. If you recognize down at the bottom there, we are now focusing on operating staff as well, as we're proposing three additional security officers at high school, as well as five additional custodians, because those were an area that we definitely need to see significant improvement in regards to staffing at our high schools and two of our elementaries. Next up for instructional initiatives is our NREP program. Our NREP program is a regional program with a partnership of Clark, Winchester City, and Frederick County. We have over two-hundred-and-forty students in this program that range from early childhood special education to school-age student with significant needs, and these students are placed there from each of these divisions, and we provide services to those students who it's not appropriate for them to be in the public school setting as determined by an IEP team. And with the growth and with the staffing increases, we are at a seven-hundred-thousand-dollar increase for NREP. They are overseen by a board from the three superintendents from each of those respective divisions, so we meet regularly to talk through these needs, and that is something that we talk about quite regularly as we continue to look at the staffing and the needs of the students in that program. Next up is the enhancements, elevations, and expansion of our instructional department. Mrs. Knight and her team have done a phenomenal job as we've started with the reorganization, as well as working with our schools in regards to how we're providing professional development and learning and providing our administrators and staff what they need to meet the needs of our students, and we've identified specific areas that we need to improve. Now, there are two main focuses with this budget that are going to be a shift for us for Frederick County Public Schools, and one of And one of those is going to be on this slide here, which is the data management system. We have a lot of antiquated processes, and it is the no fault of anybody. It is because we have not funded ourselves in order to meet and keep up with 21st century learning and 21st century needs. So whenever we need data or provide data to schools, we are pulling it from multiple sources, hoping that the data is correct because it's pulled from spreadsheets and there's human error. And a lot of times, we get it right, but it takes a long time. And that time can be spent of working with schools on how to interpret data. A lot of that time could be developing programs and developing our staff. But we've spent so much time on the process that it's taken away from all the other things that we need to do. And I will share with you that we are behind when it comes to this data management system. So this is going to be one area that we will need to challenge ourselves as we continue to grow and as we continue to stay committed to moving the needle for kids. And this is something that our administration is very, very happy for, and they're looking forward to that. Next up is curriculum development. Taking a look at what we're doing currently in regards to the rigor of our instruction and making sure that we are, one, spending the money that we currently have wisely, and, secondly, making sure that we are continuously assessing ourselves to make sure that we are moving the needle for kids in a positive direction. So Mrs. Knight and her team has recommended a shift in the curriculum development process. So there is some rigorous development that she's looking at in regards to additional funding there, as well as expanding our professional learning opportunities for not only our teachers, but our administrators, our classified staff, for us, to make sure that we are continuously in a growth mindset, that we continue to shift and change with the needs of our students, and we continue to provide them with high-quality instruction. Next up is our operating fund. As I mentioned, we want to stay committed to the future. We have to continue to look ahead. One of those areas is making sure that we invest in modular space. Now, again, modular space is not something that we want down the road, but it is something that is going to be temporary. And in years past, we have never pulled money out of an operating fund for the lease and for the modulars. We've pulled it out of unobligated dollars or cost savings. But in order for us to get ahead of this until we can build new schools and expand, which we're in the process of doing, we need to continue to invest in these modulars. We are looking at other schools, as I mentioned to you all, Bass Hoover, James Wood, and Millbrook. Right now, we are just moving forward with Middletown. And to the testament of our commitment, we've determined that we did not have to add modulars to Jordan Springs, which is going to save us some money down the road. And that was due to Mr. Goodwin and his team to really doing a fine-tooth comb of making sure that we truly need those, and that saved us some money for the long run. Next up is committing in safety and security. Mr. Bell, did you have a question? I can stop there.
Mr. Chairman, may I? I was just curious, how many modulars does that entail? $175,000.
So for Middletown, Mr. Goodwin, do you know how many that is? I think it's five. 10. Sorry, I saw Kristen's five, and I missed her other hand. It is 10, sir.
For $175,000?
That's, yes, that is the lease, correct.
Okay.
Yes.
Per unit, or?
That's total. That's total.
Total. Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
I understand.
Great question, Mr. Bell. Thank you, and thank you, team. Next up is our safety and security. This has been a really big deal, and I put a lot of credit to Mr. Conlin and his vision to keep Frederick County Public Schools safe. He does a fantastic job. But as we know, he's looking for more resources to make the things happen with his goals that he has for his department and this school division. He is very active. He works very closely with our administrators, with the sheriff's office. And we've identified some areas that we need to improve. He continues to work on updating our locks, updating cameras, as well as other areas of improvement. Mr. Conlin and Ms. Williamson are also masters at finding grants. They've actually found a couple grants to fund a lot of our projects. And we thank them for that, those efforts, to save us some money. And also to show to show all of the work that he's doing, he's currently in a coordinator role. And we are recommending that he goes into director role with all the work and oversight that he does. It's hard to believe that we didn't have this position, let alone Mr. Conlin, just over a year ago. And we are definitely very far from that with everything happening within our schools across the nation. So again, Mr. Conlin, we thank you to that testament. So that is something that we want, we're recommending that he increase to a director role. Next up is transportation. As I've shared with you all, the magic number for our bus replacement is 13. We're currently at nine. So our recommendation is to add two more buses, which would bring us to 11. If Mr. Shepherd were here, he would share with you that this salt and all of this ice and snow is definitely not helping the longevity of our buses. As a matter of fact, we had a couple buses that wouldn't even start with these frigid temperatures. So he's working very hard to make sure that all of our buses stay in good working order. But in order to do that, we have to make sure that we have a regular replacement cycle. As I mentioned, we travel over 2.5 million miles a year, a year, with our buses. So we want to make sure that we are staying on top of that in that replacement cycle. Next up, to close out our operating fund, we're asking for an additional $100,000 for technology, for replacement of devices, as well as a school nutrition transfer, which would help with the meal debt, as we've spoke about many times. And then here's the second area. As I mentioned to you, there are two areas that is going to be a challenge for us to move forward because this is going to be a change in regards to how we operate as a school system. And again, we are antiquated when it comes to our human capital management system because it currently does not exist. We currently use many different programs to oversee the interviewing process, to oversee evaluations, which are paper pencil. And there's just many different aspects that we just need to improve. And it's going to help with time. It's going to help commit to the things that we need to improve. And it is an investment. But it is a change. And if we want to continue to promise to that investment and promise to that growth, we have to invest in those changes. It's a big deal, but we are invested in making sure we make those changes. Mr. Bell?
Mr. Chairman, may I? Thank you. With regards to school nutrition transfer and the $100,000 of unpaid student meal balances, I just want to bring the public's attention to a potential bill that is being floated around Richmond right now, where public school students across Virginia would soon be getting free breakfasts under a newly proposed bill. And the price tag for that is 43 million. And that would encompass all public schools in the state of Virginia. Curious if we know what the breakdown of the unpaid student meal balances are with regards to how much for breakfast versus how much for lunches?
Mrs. Anderson, I see you mouthing to me over there, if you don't mind.
That's something that we can follow up in a finance committee and answer to your question.
Thank you. And then my second question or request is, I know this is on this particular budget, and I know this isn't an, this isn't a very popular idea, but I still would like us to look at how much it would cost to provide free lunches, not breakfast, just lunches, to all of our students in Frederick County, if that's something that you could do.
So, yeah, so, Mr. Bell, I'm going to get to that point of this presentation in regards to additional requests. I'm going to talk about timeline and requests.
I understand, but I wanted to bring it up anyway.
Absolutely. Yes, sir. So we've made note of that, and we'll continue to talk about it.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Yes, sir, Mr. Bell. Thank you. On another note, as Mr. Bell mentioned, and I have conversations with other board members about this, with that school nutrition transfer, there is a couple bills that are currently in the General Assembly, one of them being free breakfasts across the board. And if the state funds that, of course, we would factor that into this request and make those adjustments. The state does not do us any favors in regards to when their budget comes out versus when our budget is required to be finished per state code. But if you recall, last year, we did get additional money from the state. And we worked with the county, and we gave some of that money back. Again, as good stewards and faith to our and word, faith to our word is that we want to make sure that we're doing this right. So there was additional money that we did give back to the county. So if that happens, and we don't get to a point where this is approved or not, and the state gives us money after the fact, we can have that conversation of where that money would go if we want to give it back to the county or not. Okay, so here's a breakdown. Over to the left where it says FY '25, that's what you call a baseline budget. That's where we're at right now. That's where if we had no increases, just straight across the board, that's where we would be. Over to the right is our proposed changes. As you can see, we are commensurate with the local transfer, with the state transfer. The governor's budget, Caltool, just came out in December. We did anticipate some additional money with that. There's also conversations in General Assembly, which happens every year from both the House and the Senate, to potentially increase that amount of money we'll get from the state. And if that happens, which we're hopeful, we will see a decrease in the county transfer. So the more we get from the state, the less we will be asking from the locality. Don't panic with that federal dollars going down. That's just because we're getting further and further away from that taboo word of COVID. So those COVID dollars are going away. And then those other receipts are going to be your day-to-day operations, such as use of facilities or tax return, or, excuse me, not tax returns, insurance returns. So that's where we get those additional dollars, which we account for in our budget. So the last two items here are our debt service fund. And this one is an interesting one because we would not be requesting an additional 1.5. The reason we are is because we asked for additional money last year, if you recall, for our debt service fund. But the county, which we are very thankful they paid for this, and this is just a matter of fact, is they took it out of their capital project fund, which is one-time money. So since they took it out of their capital project, we have to make sure that we don't lose sight of that. So we had to add that back in, and they can choose how they see fit in regards to paying off that debt. So that's why you see that little orange bar, and that's why we are making that request again. Because we are anticipating that we wouldn't be asking for it for this upcoming year. Next is our capital asset projects. Mr. Goodwin and Mr. Davis have worked very closely with our finance office to get this list to where it is in regards to priority. Before it was alphabetized, but from the request from you and our Board of Supervisors, we put it in priority order. And these are the area, these are the projects that we've determined of areas of improvement for our county. Last year, we were at about 19 million. This year, we're at about 14 million. And that's thanks to you all in the Board of Supervisors for allowing us to spend unobligated dollars, spending the $3 million that we got last year from our capital project ask from the county, as well as the cost savings at the end of every year. We've been putting that towards these projects. So we have been chiseling this down, which we are very, very thankful for. But we're still at a $14 million ask in regards to the assets that we currently have and making those improvements. So last but not least, just want to provide a timeline for you all, as I was just sharing with Mr. Bell, is we, this is my needs-based budget presentation to you all. And that's what it is, a needs-based budget presentation. We then have a public hearing on February 4th. But we also are going to have numerous budget and finance committee meetings. As a matter of fact, our first one is this Thursday. Yes, it is for the finance committee. But I encourage all board members to participate as we continue to navigate and work through this budget. You all then will be asked to adopt the budget on February 18th. But before that, we are going to have a budget work session as a board. And we're also going to be having a joint work session with the Board of Supervisors, which I'll be providing them with the same presentation, plus or minus items that you want me to discuss with them, so we can have an open conversation and dialogue in regards to where we think we are with current revenues, as well as what we can look forward to in regards to the asks that we are requesting from them. From now until February 18th is when you all should be making the requests and those changes. Because as I mentioned to you all last week, there is a timeline that we have to abide by in getting the county our proposed budget, as well as so they can get the budget to make those adjustments and needs met in regards to the entire county. So this is my needs-based budget. If there's things you want to see adjusted or changed, you all can do that accordingly, as you know. And then that will go before the Board of Supervisors, with hopes they approve that in April. And then you will be asked to approve the budget in April as well, which you can make additional changes at that time before you approve. The calendar is located on our website. So if you have any questions, let us know. We also have town halls. We have three town halls. The one here at Charando is going to be February 26th. Also have February 11th and the 19th. We are going to record one of those for folks that aren't able to make it in person. I very much enjoy these, genuinely speaking, because I get to have a a very, very involved conversation with a lot of our constituents in regards to our budget. I enjoy that very much, as I'm sure you guys can tell. And I'm looking forward to those conversations with our staff and the constituents of this amazing community. And I just want to thank you. I want to thank our school board. I want to thank our team for all of their hard work with putting this budget together. It is very, very arduous, but it is very, very needed, and it's good work. I want to thank all of our staff and all those at home watching. And with that, Mr. Chair, that is my needs-based budget presentation. Thank you, sir, and thank you, school board.
Thank you, Dr. Hummer. Next is new business. We have committee reports, building and grounds meeting from January 13th, 2025.
Mr. Chairman, here are the minutes from the Buildings and Grounds Committee meeting on January the 13th. Meeting, the Buildings and Grounds Committee of the Frederick County Public School Board was held on January the 13th, 2025. The meeting was called to order at 4:32, and a copy of the minutes have been provided to each board member. During the meeting, Mr. Davis discussed the capital projects updates. Mr. Kenny gave an update on the capital improvement or CIP projects. Mr. Goodwin shared an update on the fourth high school project and discussed the A&E selection process. Mr. Thompson reviewed the diesel program at Dow J. Howard. Mr. Goodwin gave an update on the modulars at Jordan Springs Elementary School. And Mr. David Frank from Panone Associates discussed the proposed easement for Frederick Water at Charando High School. The meeting adjourned at 5:21. Additional details regarding the committee meeting are included in the minutes provided to board members. Do board members have any questions about what was covered at the Buildings and Grounds Committee meeting held on January the 13th? Seeing none, at this time, I move the board approve the proposed easement at Charando High School.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, and it has been properly seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes.
One last motion, I move that the board approve the minutes of the Buildings and Grounds Committee meeting held on January the 13th, 2025.
Second.
Motion to approve has been properly seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Carries. Next is the committee report, Finance Committee Budget Work Session from January 15, 2025.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And for everyone in the audience and listening, I wish I could tell you that it was all encompassed in Dr. Hummer's budget presentation because that was basically the topic of our finance committee meeting. So we are in budget season. So the meetings for the finance committee are going to be very long and very detailed. So, but I try to keep them fun. So please do come out and participate and get your question, and at least get that get that information so that you can get your questions answered later. And you can always reach out to me or any of the board members if you do have any questions as we go through this process. So without further ado, the Finance Committee Report for January 15th, 2025. A meeting of the Finance Committee of the Frederick County School Board was held on January 15th, 2025. The meeting was called to order at 4:34 PM, and a copy of the minutes has been provided to each board member. During the meeting, Dr. Hummer reviewed the agenda and shared the budget timeline and the Virginia State Code pertaining to budget. Mrs. Anderson discussed FCPS facts, revenue supporting the operating fund, where operating funds are spent, and the development of the superintendent's proposed budget. She also shared the fiscal-wide 2020 fiscal year 2023 comparative cost per pupil compared to a 30-mile radius. The fiscal year 2024-2025 average salary for teachers with a bachelor's degree compared to a 30-mile radius. The counties within a 30-mile radius. The fiscal year 2024-2025 beginning salary comparison for teachers with a bachelor's degree and the 2025 salary for teachers with a bachelor's degree compared to Loudoun County. Next, Mrs. Anderson reviewed the rate comparisons for bus driver's school, bus driver, bus drivers, school security officers, and instructional assistants for fiscal year 2025. Mrs. Anderson also discussed full-time equivalents, FTEs, the state budget, local composite index, LCI, how the LCI works for SOQ-funded positions, and the debt service for the fiscal year 2025-2029. Next, she shared the staffing standards, the tentative budget calendar, and the fiscal year 2026 budget preview. Mrs. Anderson also reviewed the cost of salary increases for all staff, the five-year salary strategies, the cost to remove the years' experience clusters on the teacher pay scale, as well as fiscal year 26 items to consider for salaries. Mr. Goodwin explained the difference between the Capital Improvement Plan, CIP, and the Capital Assets Plan, CAP, and between the operating fund, the capital projects fund, and the construction fund. He also discussed capital asset planning, preventative maintenance, and asset replacement. Next, he shared how project priority levels are determined, what tools are being used to determine the costs associated with the CAP, as well as the fiscal 20 fiscal year 2026 budget requests for asset replacement. Mr. Davis reviewed the Capital Asset Plan, Facilities Preventative Maintenance Schedule, and Asset Replacement Program for fiscal 20 fiscal years 2026 through 2029. Mrs. Jordan discussed the notice of federal interest for Armel Elementary School and Middletown Elementary School. The meeting adjourned at 5:27 PM. Additional details regarding the information covered at the committee meeting are included in the minutes provided to board members. Are there any questions from board members about the information shared at the Finance Committee meeting held on January 15th, 2025? All right, hearing none and seeing none, there are two action items. I move the board approve the notice of federal interest for Armel Elementary School and Middletown Elementary School.
I second that.
Have a motion been properly seconded? Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
I move the board approve the minutes from the Finance Committee meeting held on January 15th, 2025.
I second that.
Motion has been made and has been properly seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Do we have any board member comments?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Bell.
Folks, thank you so much for coming out tonight on this icy cold evening here in Shorando. I want to thank the students and staff that we recognized for their hard work, and we look forward to working with our new staff, our new appointments, and a big thank you to our SRO officers for keeping order in our meeting tonight, and I want to sort of address that. I want you folks to know that are in the audience and also at home that may have watched our first speaker, Ms. Scarborough was bringing up a valid point. It was the way that she was bringing it up. If she has a concern about a book that's in our schools, or any of you have a concern about a book in our schools, then you need to bring that to our attention, and we have a process that's in place to address those specific issues, and that process can be found on our website, correct, Ms., Dr. Hummer?
That is absolutely correct, sir.
And if, if someone wants to bring it to our attention here at the board meeting, so be it, but in a way that's conducive to an operating business meeting, and that's what this is. This is a business meeting. You know, this is not a grandstanding moment. So I would offer to Ms. Scarborough, if she's listening or if she listens in the future, that to email me the book name and the, and where, which school that she found it in. I believe she said Jameswood Middle, but to be certain, and we'll absolutely look into that book and make sure that, number one, it is in the school that she said it's in, and, number two, we'll take a look at it through the process and then make a determination. And it's not just made by one person, it's made by no less than, what, 14, 16 people, Dr. Hummer?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. And thank you, Dr. Hummer, for putting together such a great budget. I'm looking forward to this budget season, something I thought I'd never, ever say in my entire life, but I'm looking forward to it so that we can better provide for our students and our staff, and that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I just want to bring up a couple of things. First of all, thank you to Ms. McCoy and the Warriors for welcoming us and hosting us tonight. Go Warriors. Next, I just wanted to make a quick mention of all of the folks who, over the past two weeks, have been spending the late nights and very wee hours of the early morning driving treacherous roads and then collaborating together to make sure that our kids and our staff are safe. Seeing how that process happens is, it inspires me and makes, gives me a lot more confidence, knowing that the number one concern is making sure that everybody is getting back and forth to school safely. So I want to thank those of you who are doing it and ask that you please be safe while you do it. With respect to the library books, or really any curriculum material in general, Ms. Scarborough, like Mr. Bell said, had a, a great point about the materials in our library, and I want to be absolutely clear that I take very seriously any time that somebody reports that there is potentially something objectionable in our libraries, most especially if it comes across with a lot of derogatory language or, or graphic depictions of sex. Those things are not okay, and I want you to know that it's not a waste of anybody's time to ask to see these materials. The library, librarian at Jameswood Middle School and her assistant are friends of mine, and they're the best in the business, and I can guarantee, if you want to see something in that library, it's open to you, just ask. Moreover, this doesn't go into a bureaucratic black hole. It really is worth reporting, because that report is taken seriously, it's reviewed. I haven't been on one yet since I joined the board, but I'm sure I will be eventually, and if Ms. Scarborough is, is finding these materials, if any parent or taxpayer is finding a material that they think is objectionable, please tell us, because I want to know and I want to take it seriously. Finally, on the budget, much like probably everybody in the audience, as well as most people watching at home, I just finished writing an exorbitant check to the county revenue office for what they think my house is worth. I asked them if they would buy it from me, and they wouldn't write me a check. They didn't see the humor in that. I wasn't kidding. Given the exorbitant amount of new revenue that will be coming in, I think the modest budget proposal increases that we're asking for are absolutely respectable. I also appreciate that they were very much tethered in reality, because schools cost money, and I don't want to spend that any more than anybody else, but I respect the time and effort that went into this, and that I did not see bloat in that presentation, and I'm sure we'll get into it in more detail, but I just wanted to say thank you for that.
Mr. Chair?
Scott.
Thank you. So to kind of dovetail into what Mr. Bell and Dr. Erskine said regarding the library books, for anyone who is curious about if there is a book in our libraries, that information is publicly available to everyone, not just students, staff, or parents of FCPS. It's on a website called Destiny. Did I get that correct, Dr. Hummer?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, excellent. So if any of you in the community, whether you have kids in the school, or you're, whoever you are, if you have concerns about a book that could potentially be in our schools, please, please do look it up on Destiny, and if it is, we have a very comprehensive process for reviewing that book. So please do bring it to our attention. I wish I could read every book in the library, but none of us can sitting up here. We just don't simply have the, the hours of the day. So please, please do look at Destiny. If you find it, it's, if it's in our libraries, bring it to our attention via the process, and we will make sure that it's, that it is addressed. Also, too, a nod towards our strategic plan, this is a massive lift. So we're finishing up Inspire 2025, which was the old plan. It gave us a very good bedrock foundation for culture in our schools. We have a lot of very happy students, a lot of happy parents, and a lot of happy teachers. So from that, we want to build on that, and that is going to run right smack dab into the new accreditation standards that are coming forth this coming fall. So thank you to the five board members that took the time to fill out the survey. We, all seven of us, were given a survey as far as what we expected in the strategic plan for this, board members that I've had a moment to speak to. We all took constituent input in mind and filled it out accordingly. So to the four other board members who joined me in filling out that, that very extensive and very well-done survey, thank you for taking the time. That being said, there's a lot of surveys going out to parents and to students and to teachers, so please take a few moments and give us your thoughts. Give us your honest, unfiltered feedback of what you want to see our schools become, because this is, this is a very big deal. As I've said from the days before, we're a third of a billion-dollar business, and our products are our children, and they're the most precious products we could possibly produce. So this is a huge lift, so please take a few moments to fill those surveys out. I get a lot of questions from constituents and concerns as well regarding our teacher hiring practices, so I wanted to just give Ms. Frakely and her team a very good nod, a solid nod. We get a weekly update from her team, we as school board members do, as far as how many teacher vacancies we have. I'm very proud to report that we started the year with 70 vacancies. We are now down, as of this week, to 47. So we are chipping away at that very nicely, so thank you, Ms. Frakely, for doing that. You and your team. Also, too, I just wanted to put a little, a little question that I brought up in the finance committee meeting that, that wasn't included in the very lengthy synopsis, because it would have been far too lengthy. Instructional assistance, I want to give a shout out to our instructional assistants. I wasn't fully aware of everything that they do, but you'll, you'll notice, I'm sure several of you noticed in the presentation tonight, that we are giving, we are hoping to give them a pay bump. Here's really the reason why. They are taking over a lion's share of duties in the classroom, and that lion's share means being substitute teachers as well. We have had a very, very difficult time getting substitute teachers, and our teachers get sick, and they have to take a day, or they have a family emergency and in comes a substitute, and lo and behold, we don't have them. So we have instructional assistants that have been pulling double duty, have been going above and beyond, and they need to be compensated for such. So shout out to our instructional assistants, and I hope the board will consider supporting that facet, as well as many other facets of Dr. Hummer's budget. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Atkins.
Hey, I just want to say good evening. I regret that I'm not able to be there this evening, but I'm, I'm there in spirit with y'all. I want to say thank you to the, the board, Dr. Hummer and his administration for putting together that, that budget presentation. You know, it's looking really good so far. I'm, I'm happy to chip away at it if we can and, and, you know, give our staff the, the pay that they deserve to keep them around, as well as look at our projects in a responsible manner. As far as the book thing goes, I have some time, so I looked it up. It's, the book's called Flamer. You know, it sounds like a derogatory term to me. I don't know why we would even have something like that in our library, but if we can have a, a book like that with the language that's in it, if that is correct, why wouldn't we want to hear that, and why would we stifle somebody's free speech? I think that's kind of the appalling issue here, that we would be doing that. If a parent has a concern, I understand the process. I've sat on those committees and the instruction committee where we've reviewed those books. However, if a parent has a legitimate issue where they're reading from one of our books, one of our books that we give and, and put out in front of kids, then they should be able to use that language to address what they're reading. I'm not saying go off the script or anything like that. I find those words offensive myself. However, if we're putting that stuff in our kids' hands, we need to do a better job as a school board and as an administration. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Any other comments?
Mr. Chair, I'm sorry, I just wanted to make a quick announcement, if I may.
Go ahead.
This Thursday night at six, from 6:00 to 7:00 PM, I will be at Bass Hoover Elementary School. The public is welcome to come and join me if they have any questions. We'll be talking about a lot of the things that we've talked about in our meeting today, as well as any other questions that you may have. I will be there from 6:00 to 7:00 at Bass Hoover Elementary School, and that, of course,